I would like to call the August 28th Board Meeting to order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Our pledge of allegiance tonight is done by Heights High School JORTC. The cadets are Cadet Major Nathan Schrader, Cadet Major Maddie Vanar, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Angel Kincaid, and Cadet First Lieutenant Cadence Davis. Would you please rise for the presentation of the colors?
May I have permission to post the colors?
You may post the colors.
Post. Please join with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Forward, march.
Our Heights High School kids and all of our high school JORTC programs do such a nice job with the presentation of the colors. Thank you. First item.
First item, under Reports, good news.
Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Beilefeld, members of the board. I'm Wendy Johnson, Director of Strategic Communications for the Wichita Public Schools. Welcome back to the new school year. It dawned on me, as I was standing there a moment ago, that this is the first meeting we've had since the year started, and probably the question I've been asked most often is, how's it been so far? And I think it's been really amazing. We've had a tremendous start to the school year. People are rocking and rolling, kids were learning in class on the very first day, and so it's an honor to be here today. We get to celebrate adults that show up on a regular basis for our kids, some of whom we had a chance to thank at the end of last week, and we'll tell you more in just a moment. But we're going to start by celebrating literacy. As you may know, Wichita Public Schools has been a very popular participant at community events for the last year, where we've not only shared the good word about the amazing opportunities we offer kids, but we also give books to them. And there's nothing like the face of a child who gets to look at a really cool array of books and decide what they get to take home. So we wanted to celebrate that and to celebrate the people who have been involved in making that happen. So I am pleased for our first item, to invite Susie Finn forward and a group of WPS staff members who we want to celebrate and say thank you to.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. I'm Susie Finn with the Strategic Communications Division, and I have the privilege and honor to lead our WPS Proud Community Involvement Team. In the years past, we have relied on community partners like the United Way of the Plains to help us provide books for students to take home and have access to reading material during breaks. And while they still do that, and we are very grateful for it, this year we were able to use a small amount of ESTR funding to work with Library Media Services and purchase books for students of all ages that we could give away at community events in Wichita. We did this so that we could also show our students and their families that we support them and their continued learning even during the summer. Thanks to a total of 48 volunteers who helped at eight community events, we've given away more than 2,200 books this year. These opportunities started with Open Streets Nomar back in May and went through Riverfest Juneteenth and two National Nights Out in August. We have additional opportunities coming up soon, including Open Streets ICT in September and the East High 100th Celebration Event in October. Any district staff members can join the WPS Proud Community Involvement Team. It's a group in Microsoft Teams, and we share these and other opportunities. Those joining me tonight have participated in three or more of these events, and they include Bridgette Warren from Guest Staff Services, Gil Alvarez, our Deputy Superintendent, Kiwanah Bowen in Strategic Communications, Lauren Hatfield, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary, Maria Currie from Strategic Communications, Stacy Dennison from Guest Staff Services, and William Graves, our Executive Director of Research and Assessments. We are very grateful for these team members who took time out of their evenings and weekends to ensure our students have access to engaging reading material, helping us all work toward our district's goals of increased third grade literacy and graduation rates. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of your willingness to give back to our kids, and you're right, there's nothing better than watching a child get a brand-new book. So, thank you.
If any of you are interested in being part of that crew, let me know. We can connect you to the team as we engage in the community this fall. As Susie said, there'll be several opportunities to do so. But before we get to fall, hopefully, we will be able to see the thermostats coming down and our thermometers, because last week was a little, a little warm. And we, I don't think I've ever seen the temperature like it was, and there were a lot of heroes that showed up day in and day out to support our kids and our teachers. At the beginning of the week, air conditioning got a lot of attention, and at the end of the week, we had the opportunity, a number of members of the leadership team had the opportunity to go to the First Student Bus Driver Lot, they call it the Bus Barn, where they dispatch buses from. And we spent the morning at the South Lot and had a chance to say thank you to drivers who showed up in 100 and goodness knows what it must have felt like in your buses, and did it sometimes twice, maybe four times a day to support our kids. We have the opportunity to say thank you to some of those heroes this evening, as we recognize First Student drivers who have been bus drivers for 25 years. 25 years, friends, that the individuals you are about to meet have gotten up early and made sure that our kids had a smiling face and someone to greet them when they got off the bus, and someone to make sure they got home safely. So I am honored to welcome Lisa Riveros, our Director of Transportation, to introduce you to some really important heroes in our district and allow us all to tell them thank you.
I'll introduce myself. My name is Fabiano Rendares. I'm the Division Director of Operations, and I have the honor of overseeing transportation. But first, good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the board. This is my 13th year, both directly and indirectly supporting student transportation. And I spent my first seven in Lisa's shoes as the Director of Transportation, and those were some of the most meaningful years of my life because of the amazing individuals that I had the opportunity to interact with. Often, as Wendy mentioned, unsung heroes that provide a service in our community that often goes unnoticed. And it's very timely that we are doing this celebration tonight, because, again, considering the challenging week that we had last week, and these individuals are so committed to our district in a time when there are other districts that are struggling and have had their entire school system shut down because of the lack of drivers, we didn't encounter the same thing. And I can share that, being in the lot, and thank you to everyone that showed up last week, the commitment that every single one of these individuals, including the two that you'll meet tonight, is pretty incredible. There were no complaints. They really are there because they have a passion for our district and for kids, and it speaks. And I say this because we would expect that of anyone that works with students, but again, they are contracted individuals, they're an extended part of our Wichita Public Schools' family. And so the fact that we've been able to build this partnership like this with them is pretty incredible. The other part that I would be remiss to say is considering, we're celebrating these individuals, but I do want to thank every single bus driver out there, not only that works for us and with our kids, but our entire community, because it is, it is a challenging, challenging job to drive that 15-by, or that 10-by 40-square-foot machine with kids screaming in the background and trying to focus on top of the 100-plus-degree weather. So with that said, the last thing that I do want to acknowledge is tonight, we're celebrating those individuals that are meeting these benchmark years. But since the last time that we did this type of celebration at the BOE meeting, we've had other individuals that have met these benchmarks, so just know that we will have an opportunity to acknowledge them and celebrate them down the line. But tonight is about two of the amazing individuals that you'll meet in front of them. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to our amazing Transportation Director, Lisa Riveros, who will introduce you to them.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Mr. Beilefeld. Wichita Public Schools transports more than 16,000 kids each and every day, and they transport them to places where they are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. The individuals that we're going to recognize tonight have chosen Wichita Public Schools amongst anyone else to transport our kids for. We will recognize three different individuals. First, I'd like to recognize two individuals who have been in our district for 25 years. These ladies were hired in the 90s by School Services and Leasing. They stayed on through Durham School Services, and for the last 13 years, they have been in partnership with First Student, our partners. These ladies started serving our students many years ago, and it is my delight to be here to honor them. We have Pamela Miller and Stormy Funk. I want to take... Pamela serves Northwest Early College Academy, Robinson, and Kensler, but she's served thousands of kids over thousands of miles in this last quarter of a decade. She's well-respected by her teammates at the North Lot, and she is very committed to her students. I cannot even begin to calculate all the lives that she has helped impact. Next to her is Stormy, and Stormy is our Special Education Liaison, which means that she's responsible for about 1,900 students, making sure that they have their special ed transportation needs met. She does this day in, day out with a smile, and nobody wants to know more about kids than her. She's constantly learning, wanting to be able to serve our kids with the best possible heart and with the best possible service. It is my pleasure to have these two on our team. Thank you again for letting me honor them today. We had a third honoree, Mr. Brian, and Brian was unable to be here with us, but he has served our district for 30 years. Thank you again.
Thank you, ladies, very much. We appreciate your dedication to our kids and our district, and we know that you are also the, in a group of bus drivers that believe just as you do, so thank you very, very much.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Beilefeld, board members. I, gosh, that's a hard one to follow. So I really, I'm really glad that you guys have started recognizing more of the unsung heroes, and we really, really do appreciate that, and I'm sure the First Student does as well. So, good things are happening. I'm getting a lot less phone calls this year at the beginning of the year, so I'm going to knock on wood and keep my fingers crossed. Heat plan. I understand that we were going through something that was very abnormal last week, but that was probably the biggest call I got, that people were, you know, actually feeling physically sick. And of course, I told them, well, we want to stay as long as we can and keep school going for kids, but your health is important. So, you know, wasn't calling a sick-out or anything there, but I do, I do want you guys to be very aware that, you know, some of our older staff can't deal with 85 degrees extended, and if it gets slow like that, I know that we've got to make sure that some of those kiddos have a place to be, because they may not have air conditioning at home, and school's the best and safest place for them. But as that happens, we'd like to have some conversation at some point about maybe what the degrees are and try and get some parameters, because I don't know that, you know, hot falls are going to go away, and maybe next year we may have a similar situation we need to look at. But I do want to congratulate everybody for really stepping up and getting to it, because I think you did have every air conditioning company in Wichita on, on all of your schools. So, another thing, while it was hot, and maybe I just need to see about getting a badge when I need to get into a building and see people, but I stood in the lines with the kids and the metal detectors, and it made me so sweaty, I almost had a bad hair day. But I, but I will tell you that, that it was, it was tough. You know, the few minutes that they're out there in between classes in some of the schools and then having to recheck. I witnessed some things that, you know, some of the teachers were sending kids back and forth and really checking them, and some of the kids were just giving an explanation and getting waved on and not sent back through. And so, you know, don't want to call anybody out, get anybody in trouble, but I do think if we're going to do these for anything other than theater, like, we've got to really work around them, and we've, we've had some pretty long lines. So if we can keep a, keep a good eye on that, I know everybody's doing the best they can, but I talked to several staff that were kind of frustrated and, and some situations where it just wasn't as convenient. And last but not least, I appreciate the quick reaction to any of the violent situations we've had in the district. I think you guys have done a good job of going right after those things and handling them, and I will say that I think you've stepped some things up that have kept those lower at this point in time. I think we had a lot more occurrences at this time last year than we did this year, so hopefully that's on a decline, and we appreciate your efforts in taking care of that. So, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hello, Katie.
Hello. Good afternoon, or good evening, BOE President Logan, Vice President Albert, board members, and Superintendent Beilefeld. I also wanted to say that I've noticed a big difference in teacher morale this year. I'm hearing from staff in the buildings that there's been an emphasis on creating a supportive, positive culture from the top down. So we really appreciate that. Our staff is feeling pretty good. We're having a good start to the year. I also wanted to kind of, what Esau said, thank Luke Newman and his team for all their hard work this past week during the heat wave. They did a great job of getting out. I even received texts from staff members that were like, hey, I didn't have a problem in my room, but somebody came by and checked to make sure, because it was in the area, and they wanted to make sure that my room was cool and that we were okay. So we really appreciate that. I know that if there were AC issues, like at Wilbur, went down for a little bit, they had like seven people out there and looked into it and worked on it as quickly as possible. So we appreciate that. We've had a few teachers in the past week who've been moved to new buildings, and it's due, they might have a smaller class, and there's higher class sizes somewhere else, so they've been moved, and they understand absolutely that that needs to happen, but I know it can be very stressful, because they've already set up their classrooms, they've met their students, they've met their families, that meet the teacher night. And so I just wanted to say thank you to HR and Sean's team, because we had some teachers that were feeling, especially one that had been in her classroom over 20 years, and so she had all kinds of things to pack, and they made sure she had enough time to pack, moved it all over, and then also made sure she had a few days to get her new classroom set up, and so she could be prepared for students for next week. So we appreciate that extra time. We've, we've had, talking with teachers, things seem really, like they're going really well, but we have had some calls from sped teachers just with some workload concerns lately. And Dr. Evans, he's, he always goes above and beyond whenever we reach out to him, but I'm definitely noticing more of an increase, our sped teachers, and I don't know if it's because maybe vacancies or paravacancies, and so it's harder for them to get their workload done. So I wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. And then to what Esau said about, I know there's been, we haven't heard as many serious incidents out with, with our staff. I know that there was an incident last week, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Superintendent and the admin team over at West, because they were very supportive and really showed a commitment to ensuring our schools are safe places for staffs and students by acting quickly and addressing those issues right away. So we appreciate it. But it's kind of a reminder also that we need to continue to focus on safety, and it must still be a priority. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item, public hearing on the 20/23/24 intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and proposed budget.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we do have two speakers that have signed up to talk with us about the revenue-neutral rate and the proposed budget. So Jerry Collins, if you would come forward, and you do have three minutes to talk with us. So thank you very much for coming, sir. Take your time, your time doesn't start until you get to the podium, so thank you.
Well, I'm just an ordinary old citizen, and I'm 32 years old. I wished.
Me too.
No, I'm actually 87 years old, and I'll be 88 in November. So I'm kind of speaking for a lot of the older people in my area. My house is pretty old. Believe it or not, I actually built it, and then I sold real estate for 34 years. So believe it or not, I learned a little bit when I was working in real estate, and I learned about appraisals, and every customer I sold a home had to go and get an appraisal, because a bank wasn't going to just give money on their say-so. So what I'm saying is, our old homes in that area, for our old people, the value isn't quite there, like they say. And what they do nowadays, they take a helicopter, they fly over an area, they take a high-resolution camera of the house, and it's a good camera. When it takes a picture of the house, you can read the license tags on the car, so it's a good camera, I realize. But all it's picking up is outside of the home and the neighborhood. And so a lot of us old people, our income is reduced, believe it or not. It's too bad I'm not a millionaire, because I'd sure love that, but it ain't going to be. So the problem is, the older people are having trouble, and I notice they raised mine about Well, that's a fair amount, and of course, it'll kind of, the mill levy, events, it will affect the value. And I, I know all that, because I've done it for a jillion times, and I've went with people to banks, and then they send an appraisal out, and they look them over, inside, outside, everywhere, and they can form a pretty good opinion of what the home's worth. And the bank ain't going to loan more than the home's worth. They just, they just can't. So that's the only reason I come over, is kind of for us old people up in our area. I happen to know there's quite a few old, and that's like me, just the same, you know? And it, I think mine will go up, and when it does, it's, it just adds much less money to put on the home to maintain it. I just have so much coming in, because I'm on social security, I'm so dang old. So anyhow, that's about all I had to say, that hopefully they'll redo up in there, and the real old people, they'll give them a little bit of a break because of their income level. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for coming before us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And see, you're well within your time. You did great. Thank you.
Well, I like to talk, but I know I need to quit.
Next speaker is John Lecter, and I probably have mispronounced that, I apologize. Close, but not right, so correct us when you get down here.
Here, dear. Well, as you can tell, he and I got a lot in common. I'm only about three years older than you. Oh, okay.
Can you, can everybody hear me? Because when I'm sitting back there, it sounds like, so I was talking like you.
We can hear you just fine, it's too...
Okay, I agree with him 100%. Everything that he said is absolutely right. I'm not a public speaker by any means, so I might lock up about halfway through a sentence. But here I am already, I'm locking up. My, my point is, or one of my points is, that I feel that after a person gets to be a certain age, they shouldn't have to pay school taxes. I think that, you know, I'm 77 years old. I don't have any children, never did have any children. Who am I paying the taxes for? My brother and I went to a parochial school. My parents paid for us both to go to Catholic school, and they paid for us to go to Catholic school and all of the neighbor kids to go to public school, and they never said anything about it, and there was no way for them to recoup that expense. And so here we go, you know, I'm going on through the years and stuff like that, and my brother and I are paying for other, other, my brother had kids, they went to public school. I never had any kids, but I'm still paying for somebody, I guess, and, and I don't think that that's right. I don't think that I should have to pay for, for other people's kids' educations, especially at my age, because like him, you know, our money only goes so far, and I had one bill last year, gas bill, it was $177 for one month, and that was just the gas bill. It was more than all the other bills put together. And I'm going to tell you right now, last year I filed the income tax on $16,250. Some people make that a month. That was my whole year. And then I have to pay all of this other stuff out of it. Then these guys want to jack my, my, my taxes up, another $800, $8,000, just like him, not as much as him, but same thing happened to me. I'm showing pictures, I didn't take high-resolution pictures from the sky, I took them standing in water, waist-deep, out in front of my house, that I tried to tell these people that, I don't know what the city's doing, but they're not fixing the drainage where I live. I live in South City. I think everybody knows where that is, their nose will take them down there, because that's where the sewage treatment plant is. But I'm watching the time, I don't want to run over here. But anyhow, that, that's the way I feel about it, and I don't think that that's asking too much. I think that there should be a time when, when people don't have to pay certain taxes anymore. I lived in Texas, and when you turn 65, all you had to do was tell them to freeze whatever your level was at that time, whatever your tax level was at that time, when you turned 65, they'd freeze it at that level. Now, it could have been good or bad, you had to, you know, you had to roll the dice, it might have went down the next year, or it could have went up more. But, and I thought that was a good idea. I came here, boy, things are just, they're going all over the place, you know? But there you go. All right, but at least consider it. That's more than the, the guy... That's more than the, the guys up in Topeka did with my, with my homeowner's tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting up with it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for funding my education.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully I won't have to do that anymore.
We always appreciate our speakers. Thank you to both of you. Thank you.
I thought this was for something else, as a matter of fact. They didn't, that, that letter we got wasn't clear. I thought I was going to be able to talk about my, my taxes on my house and everything.
Well, that, that's not our responsibility for...
Yeah, I know. I found that out later when I got here.
Yeah.
Nobody knew anything about this.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Next, we will be, I, there are no other speakers. Not seeing any other speakers. We will be closing this hearing and then our next agenda item in just a few minutes, or our agenda item in a few minutes, we'll be discussing the budget and we'll vote. So seeing no other speakers, I close the budget hearing. I'm sorry, we can't take questions. Okay, next item? Yeah. Yeah, you have to sign up. Okay?
Next item, public communications.
Okay, we do have one speaker on public communications and that is Pandora Freeman. Welcome, Pandora.
Hi, um, let me just pull this up real quickly. All right. Um, so quickly, um, just for anybody who's confused, this is why you pay for public schools, speaking to that gentleman. You are paying to have smart people who can help you when you need help, like engineers and doctors and scientists, they all graduate from public schools. So if you'd like to have medical care or nice things or, you know, advancements in any way, shape or form, you kind of got to help pay for the public schools. Okay. So I am here because the metal detectors were a bad idea. Um, I was seven minutes late to class today. That adds up to about one thousand two hundred six minutes I will spend missing my first hour if we keep the metal detectors. I was at school with five minutes to get to my class. I got in as the bell rang. They made me get a tardy pass and then I missed the instructions for our activity. I do not like missing my first hour. The assistant principal told me to just get up earlier, but this is not a good solution. The American Pediatric Association says we are already starting school too early and this would make it worse. Plus, you never know how long the line will be or if there will be lines, so this nebulous earlier is confusing. Really, I should have the seven minutes to speak, um, so I can read you a paper titled Metal Detector Security Theater: Not Safer Schools, detailing the racial inequality, social development issues, and mental health strain these things bring. But something tells me I'm not going to get that time from this morning back. Instead, I would like to summarize the paper that I ask you to please check out. Metal detectors in schools are security theater. Security theater being a measure that makes things look safer than actual measures to make things safer. Their impact on safety is unproven, the metal detectors. They make students feel unsafe and perceive disorder, as well as staff members. They disrupt the learning environment, I was late to class, and put extra strain on teachers who are already burnt out. They tend to be in higher concentrations in schools with majority low-income or minority populations, and they are outrageously expensive for a piece of metal that barely works. National security organizations have determined that the best way to prevent violence is foster closer communities and provide more mental health outlets for students. Please find a way to deal with school safety instead of lining us up like sitting ducks on the front lawn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We always appreciate hearing from our students. Thank you. Next item?
Next item, under Finance, 2023-24 Budget.
Okay, Kelly?
Well, I'll call Susan down and I think she has a presentation. Since we've been at this a bit, we decided to do kind of a Q and A style for the presentation tonight, so hopefully that...
Thank you. Welcome, Susan.
Hello. One technical moment. Okay. Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Beilefeld, Vice President Albert, members of the board. So I'm going to cover a few points tonight specifically kind of aimed at the mill levy questions. I think we've talked quite a bit about the budget overall, so tonight, really, these are focused on kind of the why, how we got here, why we got here, to kind of address concerns and, and maybe even more of a rationale for why we've recommended the budget, including the rates that we're recommending. So I want to start by, basically by taking us back. We've been at this since March. March thirteenth was our first budget presentation for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process. And we've, the point of starting that early, there's several reasons. First of all, the school budgeting is a large animal, right? There's a lot of pieces and parts to try to cover everything related to the budget in one evening would be overwhelming. I don't know that you'd want his, to sit here for five or six hours listening to, to us talk about all the budgetary components and estimates and assumptions that we use to build it. So we do break it down piece by piece, part by part, and kind of bring you on that budgetary journey. The other reason why we break it down is to kind of focus on the component parts that we think are most impactful to the operations of school, of our schools, and what the board needs to really be most concerned with as we form the budget. Your, your job related to, you know, adopting a budget obviously is to give the district its overall financial framework, those maximums to spend, but understanding why we're assessing particular taxes in particular areas or how we're utilizing new state aid. So the, the March thirteenth first board meeting, we talked about the needs related to capital outlay. And, you know, further into the summer, we heard from facilities as far as some of those capital outlay needs, they actually quantified it with one point two billion dollars of deferred maintenance needs. We had shown you in March kind of the state of capital outlay, the, the small amounts of cash reserves left in that fund year over year because we have had such, such needs related to those aging buildings. We talked about our, the age of our buildings being sixty-plus years old. So again, we're trying to bring the board on a journey through the different parts of the budgets. We started with capital outlay, we moved to the revenue estimates, right? Where how our budget's built, the new monies that we have available coming into the budget. We told you in April, we were estimating about fifteen million dollars of new dollars coming from state aid. In May, we talked about the ESSER funding and the expenditures within that one-time funding that we were going to move into other parts of the budget because they were ongoing needs related to mental health, social, emotional pieces, school safety. Then we moved into June where we talked about the revenue neutral rate. And we, we, we had shown the history of the mill levy over the past thirteen years and we have been coming down pretty regularly through that course of time, but that we anticipated a bump back up slightly primarily because of the local option budget levy. And we shared with the board in that June, at that June twelfth, the meeting, that that's where we thought we were going to go. We hadn't, we needed some more information, we were going to come back to you at the end of June, which we did on the twenty-ninth. And at that time, we asked the board, are you okay, given the set of facts that we provided to you, which was, here's what we need for capital outlay, here's what we're recommending for the, the bond and interest mill levy, here's what we need for the local option budget to support raises and utilities and insurance and all those expenditures. And at that time, the board authorized us to inform Cedric County of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. We provided the board a copy of that in July. And then July thirty-first, we gave the board a first look at the budget based on those particular mill levy estimates. We actually were able to come down from what we published in the newspaper on the, the local option budget levy. It's still higher than last year, but only by point four seven two mils, which is a point nine percent increase. So our pieces of that are pretty small. It's the appraised value that's really driving a lot, but in truth, we are capturing tax dollars that are coming in because of appraised value. So we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. And then today, obviously, the hearing, and then we're set for September eleventh for the actual adoption of the budget. So I do want to be clear, what we're doing today, we had our hearing, we wanted to hear from our taxpayers. We wanted to address some information related to that mill levy. The board, the recommendation tonight will be for the board to adopt a resolution in, for the intent to build a budget exceeding the revenue neutral rate. We're not adopting the actual budget tonight. So that's kind of the history and the why, why the six-month process of discussion, because there is a lot to get through month over month related to this budget. But some specifics related to the notice that taxpayers get. USD two-five-nine is listed on four separate lines on the notifications that go to taxpayers, which is a little confusing because they're not, they're, the abbreviations aren't described anywhere, it's hard to tell what goes with what. So we're listed four times. The SG, so USD two-five-nine SG is the general fund. That's the mill levy we don't have any control over, even though it's labeled USD two-five-nine SG. The state sets that through statute, that's twenty mils. It can't be revenue neutral, even though it's in, on the notice, it says it can be, it cannot be. It has to be twenty mils. We could not pass a budget at eighteen point four six five mils in the general fund. We would be in violation of statute, they wouldn't allow us to pass the budget, we couldn't operate schools. It has to be twenty mils. The USD two-five-nine SC is capital outlay. And that is the, the particular fund that we have recommended for, well, since I've been in the seat, so this will be the eighth budget year for me. All eight years, we've said, you, the board, we recommend strongly, you continue to maximize eight mils in the, in the capital outlay budget because there are so significant needs in, related to our buildings, that we need the dollars in this fund. So that particular line item is specific to capital outlay. Cedric County chooses to list bond separately, they wouldn't have to, but they choose to. And it's specific to bond and interest payments, we have a legal requirement to pay. And then the USD two-five-nine without any sort of letters after it, that's everything else. So in our case, that's two additional mill levies. One is the supplemental general, which is also known as the local option budget, those are synonymous, it's the same thing. And the, we have a little bit for special liability. The reason why we're listed in four separate lines from a statutory perspective is transparency. The entire point of this notice is to be more transparent to the taxpayer. We want to tell them, here's what we're going to levy and why we're going to levy it. So they can see, this is for the general fund, this is for the supplemental general fund and whatever else we have. This is for capital outlay, this is for bond and interest. So it, it, it isn't just one lump sum, they can see those component parts. And perhaps if they're kind of following along through the course of our presentations, they can go, oh, she talked about that in March, we, I saw that they have a million, or one point two billion dollars of deferred maintenance, that's why we're, they're recommending eight mils in capital outlay. So we may not be making all those connections with every taxpayer, but we hope those that are, are watching can kind of make those connections along the path. Additionally, we're, we have restrictions that other governmental entities do not. When we levy, we have to levy by purpose. We can't levy a lump sum and then split it out as we want to. That's unique to school districts because if you look on your notices, it doesn't say Cedric County General Fund, Cedric County, whatever, whatever. They have one line for state, one line for city, one line for county. School districts, because of the way we have to budget, that's why we're listed four times. The, the other thing, a question we've, we've received, it looks like USD two-five-nine is raising my rates a lot. Is that accurate? And the answer to that is no, USD two-five-nine is not raising the mill levy a lot. It's raising the mill levy a little. We're actively changing the local option budget mill levy, going up point four seven two mils, which is a point nine percent increase. The form is comparing the revenue neutral rate, which is the, the mill levy that would be in place if we were raising the same dollars this coming year as we did last year. So the dollars stay flat. You don't, can't raise any more tax dollars if you're revenue neutral. Prior year to current year mill levies, though, you have to go to the bottom of the notice and compare the proposed to the prior year to know what USD two-five-nine is actively doing to modify the mill levies. So if you're looking across, you're going, oh my gosh, that's a huge increase. But if you look kind of eight diagonally, you're seeing, oh, they're about the same in most cases, except for the one. So the form can be a little misleading, but it is true that we are taking the appraised value growth, that tax increase, if you will, because of appraised value in most of our funds. And we're going to go through the why of that here in just a minute. So again, just showing, showing, or reminding the board, because we've shown this several times, the historical mill levies since two thousand eleven, twelve, when we were at fifty-seven point zero one seven mils, the board has instructed us, where, where absolutely possible, come down on the mill levy rate. And we have been doing that year over year, for the most part, with a few fluctuations when state aid and, and equalization was kind of bouncing up and down. We've been kind of on that march down. We, we're at fifty-two point five one four in twenty-one, twenty-two. Came down a little bit more in twenty-two, twenty-three, and we just bounced a little bit back up this year because of that seesaw effect going on in the local option budget. But again, the goal is still the same, minimize mill levy wherever we can. We're at, again, in a thirteen-year period, we're at the second lowest we've been. Could USD two-five-nine be revenue neutral? Theoretically possible, right? We, we could go into the budget and say, for the same revenues, what can we do with those same revenues in the, in a following school year? The problem with revenue neutral, especially again, when, when certain expenses are going up, right? We, we shared with you, our insurance increase was fifteen percent, utilities were going up five percent. You would have to cut enough to cover those increases and not give a wage increase, or very, very small. That would be the consequence of being revenue neutral. And could we have done it? Yes. For the members of the board that have, have been on the board for a while, cutting is a different kind of pain. It, it can be done, but it takes months of conversation. It takes a lot of stakeholder involvement to, to, to unearth all the unintended consequences of cuts. It's a lot of work as we get to, what do we are not, what are we not going to do in the following year in order to pay bills? And the board did not make that suggestion to us anywhere through the course of our six-month conversation, right? We didn't, when we asked about, what do we want to do, it was, yes, let's, let's capture what we can, let's move forward. Again, we talked about all the things, all those expenses. We know about, the district is made up of people. Seventy-five percent of our budget are people costs. That typically, in this environment, particularly in the Wichita area where labor is at a high, is a, it's a high commodity, right? It's hard to find people to come to work. It's hard to find people who will stay with us. It's very competitive out there, so we have to be competitive, particularly on our teacher wage packages, but really across the board. Custodial, paras, admin assistants, administrators are, when every survey we do, wages for teachers is usually at the top of the list. There, there wasn't enough new funding coming in to try to keep us competitive. That's why we looked, again, to the local option budget to help support some of those needs. With that package, that's, that I believe is on consent tonight, we will get that teacher salary up over fifty thousand, not this coming year, but the year after that. And that was an important goal, to try to get those kids coming out of college who have a lot of opportunities to work elsewhere. They don't have to necessarily get into teaching, they have that college degree, there is competition for this labor, to get that starting salary over fifty. So as these dollars are coming in from these revenue sources, particularly related to this, the taxes coming to us primarily through the appraised value increase, what are we doing with them? Well, thirty million dollars is going to wages. It's, it's going to go right back into the community. They're going to spend at the grocery store, they're going to spend at local businesses. These dollars are, are local dollars going into taxpayer hands to perform a vital function for, for students, but also are a vibrant part of this community. for, for students, but also are a vibrant part of this community. So there is a positive in that particular line item related to where we're spending dollars. Utilities, kind of unnecessary, you know, we talked about air conditioning. We talked about, you know, the need to keep buildings cool. It's expensive to run your air cool enough to beat 105-degree temperatures. And that's not the rates. That's just volume, right? That's just running it harder and faster. Transportation, fuel, property casualty, a lot of these expenses outside of wages, they're coming out of the local option budget. That's where they live. Contract increases, school support, and really, the, the other pieces from the local option budget are the increased transfers that have to be made into at-risk in the bilingual fund. Those are statutory. So we have to do those, based on the general fund percentages. And some additional sped support, because we didn't get the special ed funding we had hoped we would get from the state. And our expenditures are increasing faster than the aid we're receiving. What does, specifically, what does each type of mill levy cover? So the general fund, which we shared, is not within our control. That money doesn't even hit the district books. It goes directly to the state of Kansas. They use it to fund their general fund. Half of their general fund is, half of their general fund is education. It will come back to us, and in actually, in some cases, it's divvied across the state, right? But we never see it in the form of 20 mils of taxes. It goes right to the state of Kansas. The bond and interest is used to make bond and interest payments from the bonds passed in 2008. There are three issues remaining, 277 million dollars left. We have a cash balance sufficient to make this year's payments. We are sitting at between 75, I think, and 78 million dollars in bond and interest. So we're good for this year, but we're not good for the upcoming years. So that's why we continue to levy. Capital outlay, repairs, maintenance, construction, replacement parts, vehicles, technology, furniture, copiers, those type of expenses run through capital outlay. The biggest need, obviously, particularly at this time of year, are repairs, replacements for things that go down. And it, parts of HVAC systems are expensive. So every time we need, you know, a particular part, we're ordering it, we're paying for it, it's coming out of capital outlay. And 90 buildings, right, 94, I think, actual buildings that have to be supported from capital outlay for all their needs, it's a tremendous lift in this fund. Tremendous lift. Special liability is used to help support some extraordinary legal and tort claim-type expenses. We, we haven't had as much. That's why that mill levy came way down. So we're just collecting just a little bit there. The local option budget, again, used for utilities, transportation, technology, insurance, and helping support those other funds, and kind of your business services, HR, those type of financial services, all kind of live in the local option budget. So again, our total for this year, recommended in the budget is 51.956 mils. That's 0.472 mils higher than last year. That, and that's on our, we did, we did increase that. That's on us. That's actively something we did. What are the consequences of staying revenue neutral per fund? Again, general fund, you can't stay revenue neutral. You'd be in a violation of the state statute. Bond and interest, you could. You could make some immediate payments. You'd be fine for a year or so. Lowering that too quickly obviously can impact future payments if you're not kind of watching where your mill levy is, or you're bouncing up and down, depending on, you know, how much you go down and come back up. But it also limits your ability to kind of go into future planning. The lower you go, if you want another bond issue, which again, at 1.2 billion dollars of deferred maintenance, that's just one issue related to a potential bond. At least having the board have an opportunity to have some conversation about what that looks like. We wanted to not take anything too drastic in this fund until the board has talked about that. And we're just, again, we're just getting you pieces of that information, right? We've had that. We talked about the, the FCI score. We're now working on a facilities master plan. So those components are in process, but we're not quite there yet. And we have a new superintendent who's hardly got his feet wet. So we're trying to kind of pace ourselves here. Capital outlay, again, the consequences there, tough, tough choices. If you cut in capital outlay, you are making tough choices between buildings, technology needs, CTE, comes, a lot of CTE support comes out of capital, and then just odds and ends. You would have to cut back or defer further. We would make our deferred maintenance problem worse if you don't have, if you don't continue to push funds a little bit more year over year. And again, we can't go higher than eight. Eight is the cap. And we've been at eight for a long time. Again, special liability, it, it's, it's low. Cuts in other places would have to be made instead of utilizing these funds. And then local option budget, that you would have no choice but to cut. That's what you'd have to do. So to kind of recap, you know, we presented our rationale for the budget and the mill rates from, from, that wasn't February, it was actually March, March through August. The board did approve publishing the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, based on leaving the capital outlay at eight mils, leaving the bond as is, and maintaining the 33% of the general fund in the LOB. That's how we built the budget. That's what we talked to the board about, so that's what we did. Again, USD 259 is actively raising the overall mill rate by 0.472 mils. We are passively capturing the increased revenue from the Cedric County Appraisers Office, appraising houses at, on average, 8% higher. The $2 million more generated in bond will cover mandatory bond payments. We have 77 million collected. We owe 277. We're not over, over withheld, if you will, in this particular fund. Even taking out the 77, we still owe 200 million in bond payments. The 7.8 million generated between capital outlay, local option budget, and the special liability fund will help cover that $40 million price tag of wages and other kind of mandatory expense increases. Otherwise, we would not have been able to cover. And that wage package, again, is critical to getting teachers' starting wages to that $50,000 figure that we, we've been talking about now for several months. So I, we do have a recommendation, but I will pause for any questions related to the material we've covered tonight.
Ernestine?
Am I correct? Am I correct that though the state legislature said that we were fully funded, that, that since they did not fully fund special ed, where does some extra money to, to keep our special ed children with all of the needs they have and to meet federal law, where does that money come from?
So our special ed expenditures are budgeted for 135, 136 million dollars this coming year. That comes from a combination of the state aid we receive specific to special ed, but the balance has to be transferred out of the general fund and the local option budget. Those are the two other sources of dollars. And what that is, is an op, it's an opportunity cost to the general fund, because if you weren't having to support special ed as much, you could do other things with those dollars. But because we, we are required to meet the, the IEP requirements, whatever those expenses are, they are, and we have to short another fund and not do some other things that we would like to do.
So in other words, it comes out of the money we would normally use for all the other kids. I know that the law in the state says it's, that the state is supposed to fund special ed at 92%. I also know that in the previous year, we were, they were funding it at 72%. But I understand for this coming year, it's going to be only at 69% of what it costs.
Correct.
So that money is going to have to be made up out of the general fund.
And the local option budget.
And the local option budget. And so the people's, okay.
All true statements.
Okay, next question. Do you know what the average tax, percent tax rise that is in the county for all homes? It's not just us. It's the county and the city and us. Do you know what that?
If you look at the, the assessed valuation in total, assessed valuations in total went up 8%.
8%?
Yes.
Okay. And, but ours did not go up because we did not add the mill levy. We just, it's just whatever the value of the home went up.
We, we had that one sliver of increase on the local option budget of that 0.472 mils. So 0.9% is us. The balance is appraised value.
In other words, nine one-hundredths of 1%.
Nine tenths of 1%.
Nine tenths of 1%. Okay, thank you.
Diane?
I'd just like to ask Superintendent Beilefeld, what, if you could explain your philosophy on how you plan to approach the budget? And Susan, you can weigh in. I, I think mostly taxpayers want to know how we're going to be responsible with, with the dollars that are, that are brought into the district. And so I just want to, want to hear your philosophy on, on how that's going to be approached.
Sure, I appreciate that. You know, it's part of the May meeting when we talked about ESSR funds, and we have, you know, one more year of that. So as we've been talking about this, mostly we've been, we've been talking about kind of the deimplementation of ESSR, what it looks like with, with ESSR funds going away. But with our enrollment trends, too, it's not just going to be an ESSR issue. There's going to be other decisions that we have to make. So Susan and I have talked with her team, I think, after we get the budget approved and we get into October, that's when we'll start those conversations about what does this look like moving forward? Looking at the cost of programs, looking at the, and by cost, we're not just talking about dollars, you know, we're also talking about time that it might take, or, you know, even looking at the output, the, you know, the outcomes of the program. Are we getting what we want out of the investment? As you guys know, you know, we, you approve a lot, you know, you approve a lot of things every meeting. And so I think to really look at those, to really prioritize those, and make decisions based on data, make decisions objectively, which is not always easy or popular, but it is important, I think, for us to be both responsible and more efficient as a district. So I think more to come on that. I don't know, Susan, if you have anything else you want to throw in on that, but.
No, I, I think that's exactly the approach we're going to take. We are already at work costing several programs that Superintendent Beilefeld wanted us to kind of start to, to say, what, what does this program do? What does it cost? How many people are involved? So, you know, he came out of the gate basically asking those questions, because again, knowing that we will be coming out of ESSR, what ESSR initiatives really have shown, great growth, great opportunity to continue to do, you know, do good things, knowing that if we're going to keep those, we're going to have to give up something else, somewhere else. And again, it's not just money, resources, time is about as valuable, if not more. So all of those pieces and parts will kind of come into the, the, our, the next phase of, of our budget planning.
And it is, I haven't been on the job long, but it is really good timing, right? Because in a few minutes, you'll hear about our strategic planning process. And I think that gives us really the ultimate opportunity to, to focus and prioritize as a district. And, you know, I, I believe that process will help us to see, the, this is what the community, this is what our teachers, this is what our board, this is what we believe we need to be doing more of. And then that makes us able to see our priorities more clearly and then make decisions from there. So it's good timing a lot, in a lot of ways. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah, but the focus will be on, on outcomes, focusing on academic achievement, reducing redundancies, increasing efficiencies, making sure that we're spending money wisely and in the right place. One of the other things I want to point out on slide seven, these are all dollar amounts that are additional funds.
Correct.
These are not the total dollar amounts that we spend in the district. We have such a large district that our numbers are.
Big.
They're unsettling.
Yes.
And so I do want to just point out that these are, these are additional this year than they were last year.
Budgetary increases in each of those categories.
And then, what was the other thing I had? And then talking about appraised values, I had a conversation just before the board meeting started with a gentleman, that, especially for people that are on fixed incomes, there is a process to appeal your home's appraised value and the increase, and you can talk to the county appraiser about that. Because I do have, have great sympathy for people that are on fixed incomes, and so there is a process out there that I want you guys to be aware of, that is at your disposal. So please, please take advantage of that, if that is, if that is of a concern. So I think I'm done with my questions for now.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, Susan, I would like to thank you and Superintendent Beilefeld for accepting the request last week to be able to come in and get additional training, you could say, to be able to understand the mill levy, the revenue neutral rate, and all of that. I left the meeting understanding more than when I caught there. So thank you so much. In that, I was able to continue with my learning, with researching and reading and comparing and looking, and I understand the increase all around. I mean, the school districts increased, the taxes for our citizens are increasing, and I'm not comfortable, although I've been voting yes, 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 all the way up to this point, I'm not going to backtrack and throw my board members under the bus. But I do want some justification and understanding with 73% of our students are at risk or at poverty level, of, or fixed incomes, like the two gentlemen spoke today. How are we going to justify telling them, when they can't pay for their own child's lunch, but we still want more money from you? I'm, it makes me very sad, now that I know more than I did a month ago with this process. I'm, I'm, I'm just really unsettled. That's a very good word, Diane. I'm unsettled with this. And I know we can't cut now. It's, I mean, we'd have to go all the way back to the drawing board and it would just be a mess. So I wondered, though, if we could just freeze. Can we just freeze programs? Don't bring any more programs on right now. Don't hire anybody else except if they're a teacher. Because it just seems as though every time I'm turning around, there's a new program and we have to say, $300,000. Yeah, sure, okay. And there's never been a pilot for it. We don't even know if it's going to work. So, I mean, I'm just, I think we just need to be a little bit more frugal with how we're spending our money. And I know that we want to get to that point, and it's a process, because we didn't get here overnight. But I'm just, I just need to understand the justification to raise this, even if it's just a little bit. Those folks are going to feel it. And what are we going to do then? Thank you.
I do think, I mean, to kind of, I guess, address what you said, Kathy, and, and I guess, kind of echo what I, how I responded to Diane, you know, I, I do think we, we, Susan and I, you know, take our guidance from you, you guys. So if your directive is, you know, let's, let's get leaner, we can come up with a plan for that. If your directive is, we're good with, you know, a 0.9% increase, we'll plan for that. So next year offers us a benefit, I think, in budget, because, well, I guess, I, if, if a contract gets approved in the consent agenda, we'll have a two-year contract with the teachers, which means we have a very good idea of what costs will look like for 24-25, which will allow us then to make better, better informed decisions. You know, they aren't guesses, they're estimates, but, you know, when, when Susan starts these meetings in March and April, we don't know. You know, there's a lot of variables and negotiations and everything else. Going into 24-25, we'll, we'll know. We'll know what we're looking at as far as percentages and packages and all that kind of stuff, which will allow you all to give us guidance on which direction you want us to go. So they are not great answers, right? It's, we're making choices. So choices of cutting are difficult, and choices of increasing people's taxes when inflation is what it is, is also difficult. So, you know, they're, neither of the options are necessarily ideal, but the 8% value increase of homes is not, you know, was not something we did as a school district, though, you know, that isn't, we're dealing with the inflationary numbers just, just like everybody else. So I don't know if that answers your question, but at least.
Well, sometimes, I'm sorry, Madam President, sometimes knowing more, and when you're more informed and you, the light comes on, and like I said, oh, I think I get this now. Now that, now I know how I'm going to handle these decisions next year. So I'm more well-informed and, and that's it. But thank you so much for helping me understand this. And. and, and that's it. But thank you so much for helping me understand this. And like I said, I'm not going to throw my board members under the bus. Are you guys surprised? And so, yeah, next year is a new year, and I, I apologize that I did not know more before this time, but I'm glad I know now.
Thank you. Diane?
So the budget is, is a, is a difficult beast to understand, especially where the schools do them. But I do want to point out that when, we are not voting on the budget tonight.
Correct.
That'll be September 11th. But when we do vote on the budget, that is only the maximum dollar amount that we are spending, correct?
Correct.
Did we reach that maximum dollar amount last year?
We did, we, we maximized the general fund, we spent that down to zero. The local option budget, we spent down, not quite to zero, but not too far from it. There were some dollars particularly left in at-risk, because that money kind of came to us late. And rather than, again, spend frivolously, we will prefer to carry that over into the coming year with a plan. Here's what, here's how these dollars are going to be used. Because school districts can notoriously be wanting to go buy things at the end of every budgetary year to fill closets. It's kind of the nature of the beast, right? I have money left in my budget, I want to spend it, because it's going away. We try not to do that in Wichita, we really make a concerted effort not to just buy supplies just to spend the money, but to put dollars where we think we will have more use. So again, when we, when we leave a little, in say, pre-K, we, we added another pre-K classroom, that was the rationale for that. If we leave money in, in at-risk, it's because we're going to implement some of these ESER initiatives going into at-risk, more so even in this year, so there's a plan. Every dollar that we have in a budget line, there's a plan. The only unplanned money we have sits in contingency. And that is about, again, we've shared this, about one month, not even quite a month's worth of all expenses, it's about a state aid payment. So about $31 million. If so, if the state would happen to be late, there would be enough cash reserves to make sure we're not bouncing checks.
Hazel?
I want to thank you for your time. Not only have you spent endless hours working on the budget, the largest budget in the state of Kansas. It sounds like a lot of money when you say a billion-dollar budget, but, and it is. And I'd like to thank you for the time and effort that you and your team have put in, not only to, to work on the budget, but to prepare in endless hours to make presentations to us, to help us understand why we need to make the decisions we're making. And in saying that, I wanted, wondering if you could give an example, as you have in the past, of what actual dollars are, you spoke about a $100,000 house, and what, what that exactly would, if you could hear in real dollars, someone could hear in real dollars, of what this impact would actually be on them. And it sounds like it's going to be huge, but could you explain that?
It, you know, it, on a fixed income, right, a $5 increase is $5 you don't have, right? So I think that to be respectful certainly of those that don't have a lot of, of dollars coming in, I, I do not want to minimize that even a $5 impact can be impactful. When we're looking at that $100,000 house, by, when, when that $100,000 house goes up on average eight, you know, 8%, that 8% is going to be about between $45 and $50 more in taxes each year. So they will pay that much more on top of the amount they're already paying. And that's just USD 259, that's not everybody else. Our piece that we control as far as that mill levy on the local option budget is a $5 uptick in their taxes. So 45 plus five, so $50 to $55 more in taxes on that $100,000 house for USD 259 taxes. Double that for $200,000, triple that for $300,000. So it, it is small in, in, as far as our, what we are impacting by increasing a rate. It, it is, it adds, when we take in the assessed value increase that we are, we're the beneficiary of by not reducing our mill rate. But it's not $500 more from our standpoint, it's not $1,000. So it is relatively small increase, but again, on a fixed income, it is still an increase, right? I mean, I don't, I don't think we should negate the fact that we're, we're asking for a little bit more money each year, but it costs a little bit more money to operate the district each year, right? I mean, this is, this is the nature of, you're employing 75% in people costs, those people want to move up the pay scale. So that component alone for us will always be a, a big driver of what we need for dollars. And that's just the, that's just the nature of schools. We can't defer road maintenance for two years, right? We have to employ teachers for the kids in front of us right now.
Okay, thank you. And I want to again, thank you for all this time, and all these presentations that you've given, and really made a clear picture for us. Thank you.
Okay, again, just to kind of repeat what you just said, for the average homeowner of a $100,000 house, it would be a $55 a year increase, that 4.0, or .472, okay? The 33% LOB that we use to plan our budget, that's the max of what we can use?
Correct.
Okay, so we're maxed out.
Correct.
That way. So that can't go up.
Correct. We, and we took the, Cheryl, you might recall, I don't know that everyone recalls this, we moved to 33% the year our transportation contract renewed, and we had, we had really been, we'd been at, at an advantage in that contract for a number of years. And so when that kind of right-sized, that was about a 25 to 30% increase in transportation costs that year, we had to go to 33% on the LOB that year.
That's correct.
And we've maintained that ever since.
And we can't go any higher at all.
No.
That's set by the state. All right. We also have no control over that 8% increase on the appraisals.
Correct.
That's done by the county.
Right.
It's not.
Nothing to do with us.
Okay. Next year, because Kelly had addressed this, as we're looking at the ESER funds, which ESER for our public is the COVID money that's coming in from the federal government, and it ends, we will have no more money after the next school year.
Right. We anticipate being, for the most part, complete with ESER by June 30th, but it has to be spent by September 30th of '24.
Right. So our, what we're going to be doing next year, since we're going to have a new strategic plan with new goals and everything else, is we're going to be looking program by program to say, how much does this cost us? What kind of benefit do we come, get from it? What kind of data do we use with our kids? So we're really going to be analyzing a lot of those programs across our district, because we're going to be forced to cut some things next year. Because a lot of them are supported with that COVID ESER money, correct?
Correct.
So I think, I think we're at the, the one-year kind of timeframe where we're keeping things rolling, but we're really trying to keep our mill levy. I was very pleased to see that this is the second lowest mill levy in 13 years. So this board has worked very hard to keep our mill levies very low, as low as we possibly can and still continue to run our district. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay. So I thank you very much, you and your team. I know you've done yeoman's work. Every month you bring us back a section of the budget, we talk about it, we learn about it. And I think all of us have spent a lot of hours going through this and saying, what's the right decision? And as we're looking at this revenue neutral piece, that chart that shows our increases was important to me, because we're not just saving the money for a rainy day, we've got to use it. We, we have that kind of increase in our district, and it's driven, just like everybody else's budget, off of what's happening in our economy. So with that, I'm going to ask if there is a motion. I see no more questions.
I move that the board approve Resolution 2023-10 entitled the resolution expressing the property taxation policy of USD 259 Wichita Cedric County, Kansas, with respect to the revenue neutral rate for financing the annual budget for '23-'24.
Thank you, Diane. Is there?
I seconded.
I saw Julie first, so the motion was made by Diane and seconded by Julie. Is there other discussion before we vote? I'm seeing none, so please, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Thank you to your team.
Could I share something real quick?
Absolutely.
And this is, this is for Jerry and John. Five days ago in The Eagle, they published an article about property tax relief that the city just passed for people 65 years and older. And since you're 39, you may not qualify. But I think Jerry might. So anyway, you could look into that too. It's a 25% rebate on your property taxes for Cedric, or City of Wichita citizens for their property tax for 2023. So that's for this year.
I do appreciate the help.
Yeah, well, all right.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I may be old, but I still can understand.
Well, we appreciate you. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys trying to keep it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, next.
I have a girl. You understand what you said, Pete.
Yeah. Next item.
I, I can send you some information to your address. Okay, we have your address, so.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Next item.
Next item, under Education, 2024-29 Strategic Plan Development, Shared Beliefs, Vision, and Mission Review and Approval.
I now know Superintendent Beilefeld has been working very hard with his team to put together our shared vision, mission, and beliefs, so that we can move into next year with a strategic plan, because it's time for us to renew it. Our other plan is now six years old, and so we're in that process of, of making an adjustment. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Beilefeld.
All right, thank you.
Sheriff. We have a, a lot of, a few elderly people looking for a way to, and then the speakers who wanted to speak on the budget, could we take a five-minute, give them a chance to?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I will call for a five-minute break.
Sorry, Kelly.
We'll return here at 7:30. I would like to call the Board of Education meeting back to order. We are now ready. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. President Logan, Vice President Albert, and Board members. I am Kelly Beilefeld, Superintendent, and I'm excited to be sitting next to the Premier Deputy Superintendent in the.
Yay!
Wichita, Kansas, Gil Alvarez. It seems like every, since I started this job, every September, Gil, or August, September, Gil and I are here talking to you guys. Usually it's about CTE stuff. Tonight, we're talking about strategic plans. So we have embarked on the journey of the new strategic plan, and I wanted to start off by just giving you guys some background, most of which I think you already know. Our current strategic plan that was put in place a couple of school boards ago with Dr. Thompson, was the 2018-2023 strategic plan. So we are in the year that it is expiring. With the change in superintendent, it offered a good opportunity, I think, for, for me and you all to not necessarily push reset, but build on what was already there, and look at building the strategic plan for the future. You all told me that you would like a plan in place by December of '23, and so that's what we're going to do. So we've gathered together two different groups. One is, we're calling a core team. So this is district employees led by Gil and Wendy, and then leaders across all of our departments and curricular areas in the district. The core team's job is really to prepare for the planning team meetings, the big team. So the planning team, which includes Cheryl and Diane, is 60-plus stakeholders from all sorts of positions in the district. We have paras, we have clerical staff, we have teachers, we have counselors and social workers, and assistant principals, and athletic directors, and principals and district office staff, top to bottom perspective. We have every board district represented by at least five people. So we looked all across the geography of the city. And then we have about 30 community members, parents, patrons, leaders of nonprofits, businessmen, Chamber of Commerce, Greater Wichita Partnership, really just a cross-section all across the board of representatives to help us know what our community wants and values, so that we can create a plan accordingly. So the planning teams had two meetings so far, and our, our focus so far has been on our shared beliefs as a district, our vision and our mission. So tonight, we are going to share just that with you. We're kind of chunking this into two pieces. Once that is approved, or we're bringing the recommendation tonight, if you choose to approve it, we will then use that mission and vision to create our focus groups and do listening sessions, and that will ultimately turn into our student outcomes that we're looking for, and our, our goals, our strategic plan goals for the next five years. So that's the overview. And I mentioned this already, but we've had two planning team meetings. There is a picture in a, in what I believe is an indication that we have a, not only chosen a very high-level engaged group of people, but we've also had very organized meetings led by Wendy and Gil. Our attendance in the second meeting was more, more than our attendance in the first meeting. So we had just under 60 people in the first meeting, we had, I think, 63 or 64 in the second meeting. So when we started this group, I had said to Wendy, well, let's, let's get 60 people, because we know about 40 will show up. Well, we got 60 people, and 60 people are showing up. I think we shouldn't be surprised, because so many people care about our district. They, they want to help, they want to contribute to the great things we are doing, the great things we have done in, in building what our future looks like. So we've done a, a series of activities at tables and collected feedback, worked with that feedback, brought it back to the team. And ultimately, that's what you're seeing tonight, is the output from what the planning team has come up with as a recommendation for the shared beliefs and the vision and the mission. It looks very similar to what it has in the past. We'll, we'll highlight a few of the changes, but for the most part, we're really building off what was already there. So I'm going to pass it off to Gil and let him do the shared beliefs.
Thank you, Mr. Beilefeld. I have the pleasure of sharing the, the shared beliefs. So I want to start by just sharing, shared beliefs are fundamental beliefs, concepts, values, and principles that underlie the culture of an organization. Shared beliefs help create a sense of unity and cohesion within a group or organization, as members feel a connection through their shared understanding and perspectives. So as we go through, there were some overarching questions that we can think about when we talk about our, our beliefs and values. And we hope that, you know, with this big group of 60, but also with you at the, with the board, and even within our district, these shared beliefs will, will all feel that we can believe in these particular values that we share with these shared beliefs. But some overarching questions were, what do we believe about children and their capacity to achieve? Teachers and their role in producing student achievement? Principals and their role in producing student achievement? The superintendent and district office and their role in producing student achievement? Parents and their role in supporting student achievement? And then the community, the community and its role in supporting its children. As you know, we've always said, it takes a village, so we want to make sure that everybody's involved in these shared beliefs within our community as well. So I'm going to take you through our 14 shared beliefs, but before we get to the actual belief statements, they, they ended up and putting them in six thematic categories, which are on your screen. So we have, the first one is student success, safety and belonging, family and community collaboration, visionary leadership, common good, and equity and diversity. And I just want to make a point on the common good, that's actually a new, that, that was a new theme that we put in, in place of civic engagement. But that doesn't mean that we don't believe in civic engagement. You're, you're going to see in the actual message itself, as we talk about citizenship as well. But we titled it common good as a change. So let's get to the actual 14 shared beliefs that we have. Some have been, some, some are new. I mean, I can't say that a lot of them are new, a lot of them are the same, but there were some new ones that were put in for the shared beliefs. So the first one, under student success, every student can learn, and they possess natural skills, abilities, and talents. That is a new one that was added. Some of the verbiage was, was the same in a, in a past shared belief, but this was a new statement that the, that our committee of the 60 really liked and approved. The other one is, every student will have access to research-based, rigorous, culturally relevant curriculum. We want to make sure everybody has, and every student has the same curriculum, a guaranteed and viable curriculum, so they can all be on the same playing field and learn, obviously learn how to read for our third grade reading proficiency, but also getting up to middle school and high school, having the same curriculum that are tied to our state standards. Another new one that was under student success is every. Another new one that was under student success is, every staff member will work to ensure every student learns. And that's, if you can think back to my, to those overarching goals, we're talking about how do we produce student achievement? This is really one of those, to ensure every student learns. And the last one on there with, high expectations are essential for success. That is one that remains from our past shared beliefs as well. So that is our student success, shared beliefs. Now moving on to safety and belonging. We have, two of them were the same, so everyone has worth and dignity and is treated with respect. I think we can all, as we look through that, we definitely want that for all our, all our students, to make sure that they are, they, they have worth and dignity, and they feel that by building relationships, by having adult advocates. And the second bullet of safety and belonging is, a safe, quality learning experience is essential for every child, every day, everywhere. And that, those two are actually the same as we had on our previous strategic plan as well. So moving from safety to belonging to family and community collaboration. We have one bullet, which is the same. All staff, families, students, and community partners are responsible for students' academic, social, and behavioral success. Said before on that question about the community, how do they support student achievement? We want everybody to be, to have our arms wrapped around the success of our district. So it takes not only internal stakeholders, but external stakeholders as well to make, help our students succeed as well. Visionary leadership. Under visionary leadership, we have, the first one, our culture will encourage innovation and taking risks. That one is the same and similar to our past. We have, the other one is the same, is change and inevitable, and change is inevitable and necessary. Our response is intentional. And the last one is a new one. Resources are allocated equitably and efficiently. And I think I heard Ms. Albert talk about that, looking at our budget, and we want to make sure we're, we're doing everything efficient. So that was another one of our shared belief statements. So the last two, this was, the next one is common good, and this was the one that replaced civic engagement. That was the, the theme of our last one. So this one ties into two. One of them is the same, which is the first one, public education is the foundation of functional citizenship, financial well-being, and productive participation as a member of our society. That one did not change. And the second one is a new one. Wichita Public Schools reflects the proud tradition of public education in the Wichita community. So we believe that that is something we want to continue to do, be WPS proud. And the last theme is equity and diversity, and these two are the same. Our students have a richer experience because they learn in a diverse environment where the world walks in our hallways. And the second one is, every student is entitled to equitable opportunities, resources, and services, so we can make sure that all students have a chance for success. So those are our shared beliefs that, that we added. Some, a lot of them stayed the same. But there was a lot of, a great conversation at our planning sessions with our big group, talking through some of those shared beliefs as well. So next, from shared beliefs, we're going to turn, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Beilefeld to talk about our vision and mission.
All right, thank you. And then our vision statement might be the one you're most familiar with because Cheryl reads it at the beginning of every meeting. So you can see just some small changes to this. There are small changes, but we, we believe they're meaningful. So the new vision statement that we're recommending, Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice, where each student and staff member will be inspired to thrive and become future-ready. So you'll notice premier district of choice, we took out in the region, and we added the word premier. So really, what we're after, and remember, our vision is what we want to be, what we aspire to, to become. That's our vision. So we want to be the choice for, for parents and families and, and do that in a way better than anyone else. We had talked about, instead of the region, you know, the globe, or, you know, worldwide learning or something like that. We just decided to take that off and just be, we want to be the, the premier district of choice. It's not highlighted on here, but we did change, I believe it was everywhere, every student or all students, to each, with that emphasis on each student, each individual being important. You know, you hear me talk about that a lot, that our, our old moniker for our strategic plan, or the outgoing strategic plan was every student future-ready. Every student matters, right? We need each student to succeed. When we think about student achievement, when we think about third-grade reading, it really needs to be each student. So we don't want to look at it as a group. We want to look at it as an individual. And then the last part is a, is a fairly significant change away from dream, believe, and achieve to inspire to thrive and become future-ready. Now, the future-ready probably doesn't surprise you, that, that being on there. Inspired to thrive was, was some language that we, we talked about. Helping kids and staff, so this is students and staff, to become more than just adequate, right? If you think about what it means to thrive, if you have a plant in your house that's thriving, you know, it's, it's outgrowing, it's pot, it's beautiful and luscious. You know, it's really, it's achieving more than you thought it might if it's thriving. And that's what we want from our kids. We want our kids to be able to thrive and achieve more than they even thought possible. So inspire to thrive and become future-ready. That's the new mission that we would recommend. And then finally, our mission. The new verbiage is Wichita Public Schools prepares each student to achieve readiness for life, college, and career through an innovative and impactful educational experience. So this reads pretty similarly to, to what it did before. So I'll highlight a few of the changes. We have each student again, is just like the vision. We put achievement in there to achieve readiness, and we put life first because the group felt like that was kind of the most important of the things that we're preparing kids for, both from community and parents and, and teachers, that really, we, we want to get kids ready for life. That also means that they're ready for a job, and they're ready, you know, they can, they can read and write. And I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't just mean life skills. It means that they can be successful in life. That was probably the piece of this that had the most discussion and the most, you know, circling, and that's what we settled on. College and career, so readiness for life, readiness for college, and readiness for career through an innovative and impactful educational experience. So we want their experience to be innovative because we are future-ready. We want them to be future-ready, so we have to innovate and change in order to do that. And we hope that that educational experience is impactful for the student, that it's relevant to their life, that it matters to them, that it's built on relationship, that it really makes an impact for their future. So with that, I've invited two of our planning team members. So Ricky Ellison is here, and I'd like to invite her to the podium. And just to say a few words about, she's one of our planning team members and, and a parent. So Ricky, you can share with the board your thoughts.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you for asking me to be here. This process has been absolutely amazing. When I first saw that there would be sixty people in a process of strategic planning, it scared me definitely because think about opinions, thoughts, when you're thinking about the direction. But the way you all have set this up has been seamless and really in a process that we felt like we have been heard, and I've just enjoyed myself. So there are a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share this evening. So again, as a proud USC two-five-nine graduate from Minnehaw, Truistdale, and South High School, being able to sit on this process, again, has been a blessing. When we think about the shared beliefs, setting an expectation for every single person who decides that they want to be impacting students' lives really is a core that then you can set goals to achieve. And so allowing us to have contribution to that, including the diversity and equity piece, including the common good, and being able to change up some of those words to really get at specifics. Every child can learn. Simple. It's that fact. We're going into this year, if I'm a teacher, I'm going into this year with that understanding that that is how I'm going to approach each student, that is how I'm going to teach, and that is the level in which I'm going to teach at. Also including the expectations inside of there, making sure that we have high expectations, and we are setting those for each of our students because we know when we set those expectations, we will have a few students that fall short, but the higher we put those expectations, the higher each of our students will go to achieve. And we talked about big numbers. We talked about those dollars and budgets right before this. A big number is forty-eight thousand students who we are servicing here in this district. And that is a big number that I am proud to say and, and be a part of this process that we are impacting. Moving on to the vision, the thrive piece is one of, one of those that's near and dear to my heart. When you think of thrive, it implies a holistic well-being and growth in various aspects of life, including physical, emotional, and social. It often suggests a balance and fulfillment of life. And in a lot of our spaces, we can think of the word success and achievement as target goals, as ends, as, as a completed. I either did it or I didn't. And when you think of the word thrive, it is a continuous and subjective goal that each of our students will be able to look at and determine for themselves and see themselves within their vision. It was really important for us to sit down and think through each of the students that this district represents. Not only one particular type of person needs to be seen in this vision. And so when we think about the verbiage thrive, we think about it encompassing happiness, not just achievement. We think about health along with that. So those are some of the pieces for the rationale behind that thrive and including that, that I absolutely loved. And then when we go to the mission and we start thinking about that impactful educational experience, and then we also think about innovation, if we are future-ready, if we are getting our students prepared for the future, the future is coming at us fast, and we have to be ready for it. My day job is to work in talent, workforce development, and community engagement, and I'm working with companies and organizations that are trying to hire our USC two-five-nine students. And the few things that they tell me, I need a good person. They don't come and tell me a specific skill because they can train a lot of that, but I need a good person who's going to show up, work hard, and do the right things. And as we begin to prepare them and we start to think about what our mission and vision, we wanted to make sure that we were thinking outside of the box. We were bringing the latest technology and opportunities to our students so that they are able to get out here and thrive in whatever industry or whatever their future, their future, looks like. So as you all start to think about those budget decisions as well coming up, one of the things I want to say is, you, you can never do wrong when the students are, are the benefactors. So I hope that that also plays a big piece in that as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Appreciate your thoughts. And next, I'd like to call Justin Castle. Justin's a middle school principal at Pleasant Valley Middle School, and he's also on the planning team. So thanks for coming, Justin.
Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, I'm Justin Castle. I'm the principal at PV Middle School. And I used to go there as a student, and I feel like the luckiest principal in the district because I get to work in the neighborhood that I grew up in. I want to talk about the process that Kelly and his team put together. He had a structure that was specifically designed to accomplish the task at hand. And they were very well, they were very planned and prepared, and they executed beautifully. Kelly really knows when to let people talk and when to kind of move us along, and we appreciated that very much. He assembled a wide range of stakeholders. There was district employees from every level. He had all sorts of community members. He had parents. He even had students, and they were my favorite people in the room. And it was just really great to see all of them working towards a common goal. In the end, we collaboratively, collaboratively created a new and updated set of shared beliefs, vision, and mission statement. And I, I really believe that they contain the voice of the people that they work for. This is the kind of stuff that we want from our superintendent and his team, and I was proud to be a part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Well, and he said Kelly a lot, but it was really Wendy and Holly and the core team that did it. But yes, it's, it's definitely a team effort. So, so at this point, on behalf of the WPS Strategic Planning Team, I would recommend the adoption of the shared beliefs, vision, and mission as presented. This work will drive development of the major goals of the two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-nine strategic plan that will be presented to the Board of Education in November. So now you all can have time for discussion and then make a decision.
We do have some, some questions. Kathy?
Thank you, and thanks to the team and the sixty-member stakeholder team that put this together. And yes, you had sixty different ideas, different thoughts, different emotions, different intellect, different levels of life, and you all came up with this. And what an incredible achievement. I do have a few questions. On slide number six, which is number three, under family and community collaboration, could you please elaborate on that? And what does this look like? All staff, families, students, and community partners are responsible for students' academic, social, and behavioral success. I'm concerned with the word responsible.
Well, I think the belief is that, that all of those different groups have a, have a role to play in helping our kids succeed. You know, we cite academic success, social success, and behavioral success. And so none of that can happen without the support of all of those groups. I mean, kind of back to the discussion we were just having about budget and our community supporting, you know, all, all of our kids with, with tax dollars, our students having a role to play, and our families having a role to play, along with our staff. So I, I guess the, and I think it's important to know, Gil already said this, but these statements of belief are what, are what we believe. It's not, it's not always what we do every day, but it's what we should do or what we believe we ought to be doing. And I, you know, the team believes that by working together, all those groups working together, that we can have better outcomes for kids.
Does the team have notable steps on how the communities are going to hold themselves responsible for the students' academic success?
Well, it's a good question. The beliefs, what we're doing tonight is really the foundation of what will come next, and that's the creation of, of goals. So none of these are goals yet, right? None of these are, have been outlined as far as what we're, an action plan, or what we're going to do, or what comes next. These are really just the foundation of, of who we are as a district and what we believe. If this is what our mission is, then our next step is to dig into that mission with listening sessions. And we'll get to, that's our last slide, is kind of, you know, what this looks like from here on. And, and to, to hear more about how to make that plan, what goals to set, and what the priorities need to be. So, so these aren't really action steps. These are just statements of belief.
Okay. Did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to add to that because when you think about family, parents are the first teachers in a kid's life. Teach them how to tie their shoe, teach them how to ride a bike, teach them how to read, I mean, as they read to them, even though the schools are part of that as well. So I think when we talk about this particular shared belief, we hope that with everybody together to have the success, to meet our, to make sure that our students succeed. Because we have, Wichita Collective Impact is another example with the YMCA, Cargill, United Way, all came together to create summer programming, all aligned to our third-grade reading proficiency goal. So just given an example of how we're already doing that in regards to this particular shared belief, because they believe that by them helping us in these summer programming, and they're tying in those programming to, to some of the same things that we do. We even had some of our staff go out there and train those particular communities that we're going to do some of these programmings to, just so they can see what we, we do and align it. So I think those two examples kind of tie into what this family and community collaboration can look like as a.
You got to start somewhere, right? So this is it. Okay, just another one. Right below it, under visionary leadership, resources are allocated equitably and efficiently. What does equitably mean in this context?
Well, I think equitably means that we're looking at it from a systems view, right? We're looking at where we, we don't have, you know, a particular school, A, who might have a vocal or passionate or, you know, a contingent that is able to advocate for them to get something that another school that doesn't have that kind of advocacy doesn't get. So we, we at a district level are able to look and see and make sure that, that all schools have, or all students have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum, right? We're not going to buy, you know, textbooks for one school and not for the other, or, you know, ten-year-old textbooks one place and new ones for the other. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand. Yeah, that does help. And just one more thing. I absolutely love the vision.
Go ahead.
Absolutely love it. It's just fabulous. And I too share in these beliefs. Good job.
Thank you.
Julie?
I appreciate your work too. I also appreciate that we're getting at this early in the year. You just jumped right on it. Did a great job. I just have one. I just have one question. I was wondering if you could provide the board with a list of the 63 members?
For sure. Yes. Yeah, we can definitely do that. Yep.
Diane?
First off, I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the presenters here tonight. Thank you guys for painting a picture of what the meetings have been about. It's been an honor to be there and present and listening to hear everybody's input, and I do agree that the district leadership team has done an excellent job in keeping us focused and moving us forward at the same time in a short amount of time. So to everybody involved with that, thank you very much. I do want to point out and recognize that we are building on what's currently there. We're not just removing the current strategic plan, so I want to thank you for honoring the way that the current plan has been developed. It was revolutionary how that was developed, and so I just want to thank you guys for honoring and respecting the current plan and to build upon it. And so I do want to challenge the team that I'm part of and also the community listening events as we start to set goals and move forward with that, to really continue to focus on academic achievement. Let's not lose focus of what we're really here to do, and that's to build on student success. And so I do want to see a lot of goals set around academic achievement, along with other things. But I'll steal a line from Susan, that we can do anything, but we can't do everything. And so just make sure that we don't lose sight of what our main purpose is here. And so I do look forward to the meetings, and thank you guys very much. It's been an honor to be part of this.
I just want to say congratulations to you and your team and everybody, and it has been an honor to be a part of that team, because everybody that's there has their hardest in the right place. They want what's right for Wichita Holy School students, and that's dynamite when that happens. What we have in front of us tonight is the foundational pieces that the goals then are built on, correct?
Right.
And then once those goals, which we have to approve as a staff, I mean, as a board, then those go back to you to put the legs to those, what happens. So these shared beliefs are a guide. They're not meant to be, every one of them's going to have action steps under them.
Right.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay. And the vision and mission then become the big pieces that we put out into the world about what we think should happen in our district. And it is a change with the vision statement moving from dream, believe, and achieve, but I think we're ready to do that. I think we're ready to talk about students thriving, which means being more than just successful. It means they're well-rounded, that they're people that others want to hire. And we become future-ready. That's going to look different for every kid, but that's okay. That's the way it should. We should be looking at every child and what they can do, and take them as absolute far as we can possibly take them. And that's what allows us to do that with that future-ready piece. So great job, yeoman's work, not easy work. As fast as this went together, I was amazed. So keep going. I'm anxious for the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Ernestine?
Well, in the middle of all of these laurels and kudos and great cheering for you, I have a point that I think should be changed on the vision. I think the part that we're leaving out, and I don't think that we need to change what we have there, but put in, and here would be how I would put it. I would pick up where each, I don't know where I'd put the word staff member, but it's where each staff member, if we're each student, I would, would become future-ready, inspired to thrive individually and as members of the greater community. Way back 175 years ago, public education with tax money, our gentleman earlier was saying, you know, why should I support schools when I don't have any kids? Way back when this nation figured out that we could not support a democracy, we could not support self-government if we do not have educated citizens, educated people. I do think the idea of providing the future-ready for the job, for personal thriving, but the real thing that made public education in this country, the first nation in the world that did that, can you tell I'm a history teacher? But it is so significant that without intelligent voters, without intelligent citizens, without people coming and speaking to the public like they did tonight, without people showing up, we do not have a democracy, we do not have a community, we do not have a society in which our kids can thrive. That's why that I want to put in there the words that say, to become, and I would put the future-ready at the beginning, and say, where each student is inspired to thrive individually and as a member of the greater community. Thank you.
In a few minutes, I'm going to entertain a motion on this, and then we can amend it or whatever we need to do. Are you wanting to make that a motion now to be a change?
Yes. And truthfully, I don't want to try to be the wordsmith on it. I just want to say that we are preparing them for two things, to thrive individually and to be a part, a work, a helpful part of the greater community. And how you put that, I don't care. That doesn't matter. But I want to have us say, we know that what our responsibility is for Wichita, Sedgwick County, Kansas, the United States. We know that to be a part of the, a useful part of the community is a big part of why we educate them. That's why we started this whole process 170 years ago.
There is a motion on the floor. It's a little bit iffy at the moment.
I'll word it this way. I move that it be changed to include, to be part of the greater community, to thrive individually and to be part of the greater community.
Okay.
Subpoint, the wording can be changed.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hazel was up next, and then I see Stan. So Hazel?
Well, the discussion actually wasn't about Ernestine's.
Okay, well, we'll just hold you then.
Well, actually, I could say something.
Okay.
So I was wondering if we didn't vote on it, if they refigured it and rewrote it so that we could know, get it in a better perspective instead of voting on that, voting on it tonight.
Yeah. So pull the vision out, and I guess that would be amended to your motion. Are you willing to make that, that it could be pulled, the vision itself could be pulled out to include those pieces that Ernestine wanted and then brought back to the board?
Brought back to the board so that we could hear it in total.
Okay. Kathy?
I would agree with Hazel. I think that if you just listen to our suggestions and then rewrite it to reflect what Ernestine has suggested, like Hazel said, bring it back to us. I don't think this needs a vote or a motion.
Okay. Stan?
I was going to say that perhaps one last reach out from the staff of, and see if there's probably seven different opinions on where a comment should go and what a word should be added, or what word taken out, and perhaps bring the vision statement back with us again, because I think Ernestine makes a really good point. I just don't know if we should make it on the fly, you know, without, because I think the core group and the, has already been working on this. So let's give a chance to maybe a little more input from the others. I think two have been heavily involved, but perhaps from the other five, and see if there's any word changing that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. The planning team was very clear that they were bringing a recommendation to you all.
Right.
And part of our democratic process, right, is that you represent constituents, and you are the ones that get to be the decision-makers, because that's how we set it up. So we would be happy to do that, and we could include, you know, Ernestine's suggested language, and then even make sure we capture it in the way that you want it. Our next meeting, I believe, is only two weeks away, so this wouldn't really delay our process much at all as far as our timeline goes.
When do you start the community meetings?
The 18th. So our next board meeting is the 11th of September.
So it's before that next one.
So yeah, we could definitely.
Cheryl, may I withdraw my motion and make a different one?
That's your motion. You certainly.
I withdraw the motion. Will you withdraw your second? I move that we ask this to be brought back in a week with some wordsmithing and ideas.
At the next board meeting?
At the next board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
I will resecond that.
Okay.
And just for my clarity, is this just the vision or is this?
Yeah, just the vision.
Just the vision. Yeah, we're not looking at the others. In fact, we may vote on them independently. That way, it's real clear. I just wanted to add that the committee worked really diligently to put this together, and they discussed words. Words are important in this kind of thing. And so I'm glad that we're not automatically telling Kelly that he has to do this or that, because I think you want to have that committee begin to look at the words of the new piece, too, to make sure that they match up.
Sure.
Okay. Hazel?
What I originally wanted to comment on, this is so exciting, this new adventure that we're starting, and I'm very, I feel very lucky to be a part of this support team for you and your group. I was wondering, you have 63 people on your, in your group. Will the 63 people continue with the, finish the process out with you?
Yes.
So the team won't change at all?
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Same group of people, and we've told them that this kind of commitment is for six months, but there's a good chance we'll continue to try to keep them engaged, you know, as part of the leadership process of putting the plan into action, too. So if they would like to continue on, so.
Okay, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Diane?
Ernestine, I thank you for your comments. And then I do also want to point out just from discussions that I know Kelly and I have had in other meetings, that we will expand on what the words mean to the district. And I think Ricky did a great job of doing that this evening, of kind of taking individual words, and what does that one word mean to the district, and painting a broader picture from just one sentence. So Ricky, thank you for expanding on that, kind of setting the pace for that. But Ernestine, I do like your ideas and would like to see what staff brings back with a refined sentence on that. I think you brought up some valid points, so thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor, and like I said, I would like for us to vote individually on the beliefs, the vision, and the mission. So this is the vote on the vision, which would send it back to staff to rework this and include some ideas that were brought up tonight, and then bring it back to us at our next meeting in September. Okay? If you have that. I have a motion by Ernestine, a second by Julie. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven-zero. All right, let's move on to the mission. Are there questions or concerns about the mission? I'm not seeing any. Are you okay to go ahead and have, I will entertain a motion for us to accept the mission.
Yes, I will make a motion for us to accept the mission as written.
Okay. Okay, it was moved by Julie and seconded by Kathy that we accept the motion as printed. Please cast your vote. Stan, you didn't ring in.
I didn't get in enough, I guess.
What's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes seven-zero. Let's go back to the shared beliefs. Are we okay with these? And if so, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the shared beliefs.
And I'll second.
Motion was made by Stan, seconded by Julie, that we adopt the shared beliefs as presented. I'm seeing no discussion, so please cast your vote. Motion passes seven-zero. Very good. Great work. Now you can continue on with your presentation, because I know you've got a little bit more.
All right. So our last slide is what's next. Thank you, Gil. So we'll add a bullet point to the top of this, that is to revise the vision and bring that back September 11th to the board meeting. And I will, we'll probably try to have something to you Friday in my memo, so you can look over it and make sure we're on the right track, so we don't have to, you know, redo it again. Stakeholder engagement begins September 18th to the 20th. Last board meeting, we contracted with the KU Center for Evaluation Educational Leadership to facilitate this. Couple reasons for that, having an outside group facilitate helps to get a kind of a third-party perspective that we think will give us maybe a little bit cleaner information, and the turnaround is pretty tight on the whole thing. So this allows them to compute the data. They've got experts that do this stuff, and so they're going to be helping us with it. We will host 13 sessions for strategic listening. We'll have a target of diverse stakeholders and all types of community voices, and that will include one open session that will be on Tuesday. Some of that, we're going to have bigger groups of stakeholders facilitated, kind of like we're doing the planning team meetings, where we have a big room of people and then small tables talk. So our goal is to be about 500 voices that we listen to throughout that process. That will be followed by an online survey option for some more feedback than anybody can fill out. The first review of the goals then will come November 13th to you all. For that, we're going to do a first read, so we can kind of work through all this and make sure everyone's on the same page, kind of like we do with board policy, and then we'll bring it back on the 27th of November for a final approval. And those will be not the same four goals that we have, but, you know, similar to the four strategic planning goals we have now. So, and at that point, you will give us our work for the next five years, and we will start to achieve those goals. And that's our work is to achieve them and your work to set them. So with that, I think we're concluded, so.
Okay. Are there any questions on the board? Yeah, I see a couple. Ernestine?
We're thinking about those community, I mean, those stakeholder discussions throughout the community of the Wichita School District, right? So it'll probably be in schools or other public places like that that any citizen can come to?
Well, we will, we're going to host them all at AMAC, so they're.
Oh, we're hosting them all at AMAC?
Yep. They're all going to be at AMAC, and we will have an open one that anybody can come to. So we will have some open opportunities for anyone, but we're also, we'll be engaged with you all to do some inviting of people who might want to come, but we'll have a student group, a parent group, staff, principals, all of the diverse stakeholders all across the district, so.
And the online.
Yeah.
Well, I just am concerned about people that live all over this district not being able to get to one of those or feeling like it's somebody else's meeting, where I really was hoping that we could have it in neighborhood schools or in schools within an area.
Yeah, the logistics and the timeline, just, we don't feel like that's possible to get the data collected and turned around in time in order to get the goals done in time, so. But I would say this is not, you know, the last opportunity we'll do any of this listening. So I think we'll continue to engage stakeholders with, you know, further the process, you know, it's not, we're not just going to do this once every five years. We'll be doing this throughout the entire course of the plan, so.
And there will be someplace where someone can give their comment online?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Kathy?
Are board members welcome to come and observe and listen at these meetings?
The listening sessions, we are trying to stay out of them, so to speak, and that's not board members, that's us, because we feel like our presence in the meetings of the listening sessions probably changes some of the feedback that people are comfortable giving. And we really want to know honestly, what do you think about the, you know, about our district? What do you think about future-ready? What do you think about where we need to head? So if you want to sit in on a session just to see what the process is like, we could probably make that happen, but overall, we're going to start the group, we're going to welcome them, and then we're going to let the team from KU really facilitate the discussion because, which is similar to what we did with the rest. which is similar to what we did with the restorative practices, community sessions this summer. You know, we didn't really take part in that, and part of that was intentional, that we get clear, better feedback if, if we're not in the room, so.
So.
Does that answer your question?
Well, kind of, when you said that we tried to stay away from that, I thought that there were inside staff and administrators that were part of this.
Well, the, I, so I was referring to the listening sessions. The planning team, yes. The planning team is Cheryl and Diane, and if that's what you're asking about.
I'm just talking about the upcoming meetings that y'all are going to have. Our board members, I mean, would you prefer us not to even, just to listen if we were curious or observe what's going on? If you would prefer us not to come, that's fine, I can understand that.
Yeah. I, I think that would be our preference, we kind of told district staff that same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just get, get cleaner feedback because of that, so.
Led, the meetings will be led by the KU people, not by any district people.
Right.
Got it.
Right. Yeah, they'll be, they'll have a process where they facilitate the, it, it's, in a lot of ways, it's very similar to the superintendent search process, where those groups of people got together and we had an outside team come in and ask the questions and get the feedback, put all that together and then give it to us to, to operate off of.
Hazel?
Yes, how, how do you intend to publish these meetings, the, the schedule of these meetings, and how soon will you start doing that?
Uh, we hope to have all the invites out by September 1, which is Friday. So we'll be moving again quickly, but we've already. Yeah. We've already started to collect the names of the people and, again, we're going to probably tap into some of the superintendent search lists, some of those, you know, groups that are already standing that we work with already and invite them and get their voice.
So how are you, how are you going, it's going to be personal?
Invitation.
Invitation only, okay.
Yep. We will have some open session, I mean, an open session that anybody, any, you know, person in the district can come to, but. And, and we have, like I mentioned in the planning teams, we have deliberately kind of pulled people from buildings in all board districts across the, the district. So as we do invites for, you know, a teacher group or an assistant principal group for the listening sessions, we'll probably pull from different buildings and really try to get every building represented in some way, shape or form, so. That's the goal, so. You know, it's, it's a balance between, you know, everybody having input, what, you know, that's a whole lot of information or very few people having input that isn't enough information. There's probably a Goldilocks point in there that's just right, where we're, we're getting enough of the voices in to really make a good decision, but we're not wasting, or not wasting, but using a lot of resources, you know, in order to try to, you know. I know Ernestine mentioned some of the community sessions, you know, and some of those that, not here, but other places I've been to, you don't get very good turnout at a community listening session sometimes. So it can be a balance of, you know, trying to be efficient, but at the same time trying to make sure everybody is heard, so. Yep.
Okay, Stan, did you pull your name?
No, he, his last sentence covered it.
Very good. Okay, I'm seeing no more, more discussion, so thank you very much, gentlemen. We're, we're on a roll and moving forward, thank you. Next item?
Next item, consent?
Kathy, do you have anything to pull?
Let it be known, I have nothing to pull.
Okay. Julie?
I have nothing to pull.
Hazel?
No, I have nothing.
Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull. Stan?
No consent items to pull.
Ernestine?
I have no consent items.
Oh my gosh, this is a first, thank you all very much. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent.
I second it.
Okay, okay, the motion was made by Kathy and seconded by Ernestine to accept the consent agenda. Please cast your votes. Motion passes seven zero. Next item?
Next item, under policy, second review, proposed updates of learning services policies.
Okay, these are a second read of these two policies. One is about the report to parents on student progress. And the second one, which is P 7350, is on schools, trips and student transportation in private vehicles. Are there comments or questions on those policies? Stan?
I was just going to get the comments started by moving that we adopt these two new policies. Or, beg. Adopt these two policies, they're not new, I apologize.
Okay, there are changes to existing policies.
Yes, there are revisions.
Yeah, so there is a motion on the floor, that Stan made the motion and Ernestine seconded it? Second it? Other discussion? I'm seeing none, so I will call for the vote. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next item?
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
Kelly?
All right, thank you. I did the math here, and with the contract starting July 3rd, today is day thirty-eight, day thirty-eight. So we have got a lot done in the thirty-eight days so far, which is awesome. It's a great start to the year. We had a very cool AMAC celebration this morning for all the AMAC staff, a big pep rally. I've been in thirty-six buildings so far this school year, which some, some were quick visits, some were hour-long visits, but trying to get out and about and being, being in our schools and seeing the great things going on. So last week was hot, news flash. But we did a great job in facilities, I know as mentioned by some of our team, the facilities team did a really, really good job of mitigating that as best they could. There were some very uncomfortable rooms and that was a challenge, but they worked really hard to make, to make things happen. A couple of things about safety. Tomorrow we'll have our, our district-wide lockdown drill for all students. If you haven't seen, I think you have one of these that has been shared, and this is something that you guys approved a couple meetings ago, that is a educational opportunity for kids that was sent home with families about run, hide, fight. So again, you know, we, we pray and hope that we never have any kind of situation that causes us to need an active shooter response or lockdown drill, but we want our kids to be ready and safe as much as possible. So I will mention too, you know, it was brought up tonight about the weapon detectors. East High has started this year with weapon detectors, they were our last building to get it. If you know East High, one of a, kind of a challenging building to, as far as entrances and process. So I know they're still working on it, you know, I, I think it's, it's reasonable to give them some time to troubleshoot problems and figure things out, and I think kids will get to class. I was at West High last Friday morning and watched the entrance, and it was, you know, TSA has a few things to learn from West High, because they have it down. I mean, it was really, really impressive, so I think East High will get there, and I think most of our buildings are really running smoothly when it comes to that. Next week we have district in-service on Tuesday, and we have kind of an innovative model we're using, where we're bringing in keynote speakers for our secondary teachers, and they get to pick which one they go to. So we'll have Joe Sanfilippo, who's coming to talk about leadership, Matt Townsend talking about standards reference grading, John Andrade talking about rigor, Chris Perry talking about creating inclusive classrooms, Mark Perna talking about college and career readiness for younger generations, and then Kareem Farha talking about modern classrooms. So trying to give teachers choice, that's one of the things we hear a lot from teachers is, you know, let us have some choice in things. And so we're trying this to see how that works. And I think it'll be a great, great day. Last couple of things, and I know she won't be thrilled about me, but I do want to congratulate Susan for achieving, she was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So congratulations, Susan. Susan is great at what she does, but she doesn't love the accolades, so we, we give them to her anyway. And lastly, a pretty exciting opportunity, next Tuesday morning, the Deputy Secretary of Education, so this is the number two under the Secretary of Ed in Washington, is going to be on-site to visit the district and tour the Future Ready Center, and then we're going to go to Jackson Elementary and see the mindfulness room and see some of the letters training, and they're really, they're interested in seeing how we've used ESAR funds to impact kids. And so we're, we're excited to tell the story, and they reached out to us and wanted to come see us, and so we, we said yes. So we're excited to have Cindy Martin in the district next week, so. And that's all I have. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Board of Education, report and requests.
Ernestine?
Well, I have not done anything except go around and be around and watch the crowds and watch the kids come with smiles. And even the teachers are coming with smiles, I just really am excited about this. But what I really want to say tonight is, Kelly, I really believe that this district, it is what we're doing with our Future Ready, what we're doing with our, our Future Ready Center and all of our pathways is very special and very unique without, within the whole Midwest. I don't know beyond the Midwest, but I know. And the, the Council of Great City Schools is coming up, and they are asking for presentations. I really would like to not vote by the board that you have to do it, but I really want to have you go to the Council of Great City Schools and tell them our story. It's just like having the, the Secretary of Education coming. We are making some exciting new changes that really are needed across the nation, and I want to share what, what we're doing, and I really hope that you will consider being a presenter.
Stan?
Thank you, Cheryl. I just wanted to thank the team effort in getting the school year started, all the way from Kelly's efforts all the way down to the students and the parents. And I also appreciate the feedback we get. I remember a couple of years ago, or in my early years of being on the school board, and I would get an email about a problem at the start of the school year, and I wasn't a hundred percent sure how to react to it, but now it's important to get those type of feedback, even on negative things, because some of the problems that we had two or three years ago, we corrected for this year. So I appreciate the feedback as well, but really appreciate the team effort in getting the school started. I also wanted to just briefly state, there's two areas as we get into this, we laid the foundation tonight for our new statement. There's two areas that I think we're going to have to really concentrate on, and that is, under student success, we're going to need to do some really, some real thinking on how we want to incorporate critical thinking skills into our efforts here. With AI coming on and the amount of disinformation that's out there, the best thing that we can do are, for our students, is show them how to dissect information and actually get into critical thinking. And the second area, and it's, it's the same area of what Ernestine has mentioned, under common good, we're going to have to, and I'm, I'm going to hope that we include in those areas, once we get past the foundation areas and get in more of the details, but we are going to have to talk about citizenship and civics. And we're going to have to, there's are two areas that are going to be very important for me, and so I thought I'd share it now to get my foot in the door. And, but I think those are two areas, and those two areas that we're going to have to add some flesh and bone to and really make it as an important part of our strategic plan. Thank you.
Diane?
Sorry, I was making notes on Stan's comments. Quickly, just a few things that I was doing since the last board meeting, as I attended a new teacher orientation where we welcomed over four hundred new teachers to our staff, so thank you to our HR department and our talent acquisition team. I also participated in clap-ins to welcome students on their first day of school, back at Brooks Middle School, Gordon Parks Academy and Spate Elementary. And I want to say thank you to the community members that were present to welcome the kids, and thank you to the Future Ready Advocates and the Heroes Academy, who were also out that day, that I saw many of them at those same schools. I also went on a tour with Hazel at the WSU Innovations Campus for their newest buildings. So we toured the Go Create building, the John Bardo Center, the NetApp, Techtron and Airbus's building. We discussed our, our longstanding partnership between 259 and WSU. And then we also discussed applied learning, which their definition of that is bridging the gap between the classroom learning and the real-world experience. We also discussed career readiness and employability skills. They shared to us about the Shocker Career Accelerator Program and the WSU Applied Learning. And there's a number of different opportunities that 259 students have, where we're partnering with, with WSU. People can look up the Innovar process, and then also, we've got new programs that we added, like Summer School, there was a drone soccer activity, and there's a video online that people can watch, because I had no idea what that even was. But it's an interesting STEM camps that we're partnering with WSU on, so that was interesting to learn all about, so. And then also I do have a request, and I'll fill out the paperwork, Patrick, but to have a presentation in the future about the Future Ready Advocates. Today I had a meeting with Dr. Polite and Gil Alvarez, where they shared a lot of information that, about that program, and I feel the public would, would like to know that information as well.
Yeah, just fill that out and give it to Patrick, please. Hazel?
I had the opportunity, and I spoke last meeting about how important it was, how important our community partners are and how important it is for us to know who they are and what they do for us. So Diane and I were able to go meet with the director, Ariel Rodriguez, at the Empower Office located in Aragreen Library. And he spoke to us about how Empire connects with residents by providing programming and education, workforce and small business development. I also was able to attend the legislative, legislative build hosted by Habitat for Humanity, and I worked alongside various community member, community leaders to support Habitat, who partners with families, providing them with opportunities to create a healthy, successful future. I didn't get paint on my fingernose at all. They were pretty amazed about that. I attended the Hadley Middle School Red Carpet Event, where the principal, Ron Stubbs, and his faculty welcomed sixth grader, incoming sixth graders. It was great, it was very, very upbeat and pep. There was a lot of people from the community along with the staff that were there to welcome the students. It was real, they announced each student's name, it was really a nice event. I dropped in on Pleasant Valley Elementary on their first day of school, and everyone was excited and ready to welcome students on their first day. I was able to attend a reception for the new director of the Heroes Academy, Mario Barnes, which is a great partnership. You'll hear the Heroes Academy mentioned quite often. I was invited to sit at a workforce roundtable with Mr. Kelly and Diane, hosted by Senator Roger Marshall at our fabulous Career Ready Center. We sat with industry leaders who were invited to discuss pressing issues and innovative solutions shaping Kansas workforce. We were told afterwards that the senator did not want to leave, he wanted to, he was playing on the forklift. Device, he said, he never, he never ever touched, never thought he would ever operate a forklift, he was very impressed with that. As Diane said, I toured the WSU with Tanya Witherspoon, and it was about a hundred and ten that day. And it was very, I think I put all my steps in, there is very impressive campus. They have the buildings that they have built that we are partnering with them, you, they're using, we're using and developing programs have all been, been built in the last ten years, so it's a very progressive program, and they're, they are really future-ready with. And I was very impressed to also hear our esteemed Mr. Kelly being praised at every, in every step that they were taking. He's been a big part of that, him and, and Rob Dixon, yes. Met with the new McKinney-Vento Director, Denise Lawson, I had made a request for, for a report on the McKinney-Vento Program, which services homeless, our homeless students, and so I don't know what, where we're at on that, but I have made a request for that, I think in the spring. Ortiz Elementary, there's a new principal there, James Quillen, he's off to a great start, he's very excited, he's energetic, and I think he's really got some great ideas for the year. And last but not least, I attended a luncheon where Mr. Beilefeld was a keynote speaker, and he spoke very eloquently about our district and the future of our students, and I think he impressed every person that was there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Julie?
I just want to agree that I'm pleased that we're off to a great start to the new school year, and just thanks to our staff and other, our teachers and other staff members that support our students.
Kathy?
Well, I had a busy time too. I met with Superintendent Beilefeld and the library staff here, and I've learned about the process of our different libraries across our district. I popped in also to Peterson Elementary. I popped in also to Peterson Elementary in Benton and Wilbur, and pleased to say Benton has got a whole new office and HVAC, and I was there when the fire department was there signing it off, because it was all good to go. I attended with Hazel a legislative day at the House that was being built for Habitat for Humanity, but I did not paint. I ate. So that was okay, because they offered us lunch. I, too, was with Hazel when we welcomed the sixth grade students at the Red Carpet Event at Hadley, and our enthusiasm was contagious for both of us. I, too, attended the luncheon to support Superintendent Beilefeld on his presentation, and I got very wonderful, positive remarks after that. I think the community is very excited in the direction that our district is going into. And again, thank you to Susan and the superintendent. We've spent a lot of time together lately, haven't we, on that detailed training on the budget, mill levy, and the revenue neutral. I attended the Crime Commission Luncheon, and I listened to Cedric County DA Mark Bennett, and I was hearing some, some pretty shocking statistics about our youth in the county, and that includes our students here at 259. I attended the district crisis team, learning about the run, hide, fight. Here it is, right here. These will go into every student K-35's backpack tomorrow, and parents, grandparents, everyone is encouraged to read these booklets to their child, their student, not to scare them, but to prepare them in the event of, I'm going to advocate for Winnie the Pooh in every single classroom. So if anyone has connections to Disney, we might get a donation. Okay. I also visited Gammon Elementary and observed an interview with Terry Moses in a crisis that our district faced that day. I thought she cloned herself, but she actually wore her wings and she got from one place to the other. Kudos to you, Terry. And I also watched a new principal, Megan Weichel, regarding the new security entrance for the building. I'm very happy to see the progress that is being made in our district with getting our buildings secure for our parents and our students and our staff. I attended an open house at Northwest High School regarding the possibility of the police substation moving from Central and Pueblo into the northeast corner of the northwest property of Northwest High School. I also attended a neighborhood meeting with those who will be mostly impacted if this should happen. I live right around the corner, so I, too, am someone who will be somewhat impacted, but not as much as them. I do have copies of the map, if you want to take one, Julie, pass it on, just for your information of, this is what the police department showed us, the city showed us, we could go tonight at Northwest. I received a lot of feedback, positive and not so positive. There is yet another meeting that Councilman Frye has invited the public to attend to on September the 6th at the fire station at 21st and 135th Street. There's a lot of questions that continue to remain with this possibility, and I know that it's going to be up to the board when, when and if it should come to pass, to vote on accepting the offer from the city to purchase that part of the land. And I think that it's important that we hear from the community members that will be impacted by this, and I think an invitation to them should be extended to come to a board meeting here for the school district, so we may be able to hear their comments also. I do think it's a great idea. I think that there's an idea of having a pipeline going from Northwest to this police station of students that might want to become police officers. I think that that is awesome, but there's some logistical problems that the community that is right on country acres and will face that, that police substation, that I think, I think it could be ironed out, but I think that we need to be very fair and let them speak what they want to speak and hear them. I think the most important thing that we people want is to be heard, and that's it.
Thank you. We have had a really good start to our school year this year. Every building that I've been in, everybody is very happy with how things have started up. And that sings praises and kudos to the hard work that happened through the summer and, and in the buildings themselves. So we're very pleased with, with the start of our new school year, and I'm excited to be in even more buildings over the next few weeks and months. Okay, Ernestine, did you have a question?
Oh, no business.
Oh, okay. We're ready for the next item, Patrick.
Next item is new business.
All right, Ernestine?
I just think that this board should stand and applaud every teacher, every principal, every non-teaching staff member throughout this district. We have approximately, what, 7,000 employees, 48,000 students, and not to mention all these parents. I think that we should, as a board, I would like to suggest that we stand and applaud our employees who, without them, our kids are lost. Thank you.
Okay, I'm seeing no other new business. Please, the next item?
Next item, adjournment?
So moved.
It was moved. Moved by Stan and seconded by Kathy. Thank you. Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you for allowing us to go home. Have a nice evening.